It's PM, I'd like to call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, July 14th, 2025. If you could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, would you call the roll, please?
Ludwig, Haynes?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Benalsford?
Here.
Rhimes?
Here.
Gilroy?
Eric?
Hanson?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Ludwig this evening.
Vote.
Thank you, both, support, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda as submitted, unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Vote to approve.
Thank you so much, your support, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now is an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation, but I'm going to be very clear about my rules right now. This is going to be audience participation only. I'm going to ask my clerk to be the timekeeper for those five minutes, and I am going to request at this time that our council does not enter into discussion regarding any of the public comments, because that is not the time or place. I will ask for them to come up, I will ask for them to state their name and their address. We'll give them the opportunity to speak. Once public comment is done, we will move on the agenda, alright? If there's anybody at this time that would like to come forward, please state your name and your address for audience participation. Here, thank you. Yep, right there. Yes, right at the podium. Stay your name and your address, please.
I'm Shelley Jones, 109 Block Street, Langsburg, SoCal. So, I just wrote a little letter and I did give you all a copy just so you have it and you can look at it later. I'm just going to read it because it's easier to remember what I want to say. So, but we are asking the Williamson City Council to consider creating an ordinance to allow golf carts on the city streets in Williamson. Five years ago, we purchased our first golf cart. We went to the Williamson Police Department, spoke to the then-police chief, Bob Young. He stated they were allowed and walked us through the rules and regulations. We've since used our golf cart around town without any issues, and just last month, we took our golf cart to several Jubilee events and encountered several police officers. No one informed us they were not allowed. It has been recently brought to our attention that they're now prohibited and violators could receive citations. We wanted to know if there were any documented incidents in our city of unsafe activities involving golf carts, because we aren't really aware of any. I know many residents who have them and use them seasonally to travel around town, to go to dinner, out for ice cream, take the kids to school events, get groceries, attend concerts, et cetera. I even saw the Jubilee Committee using one of theirs to get around town to work on their events. We've attached a list of signatures from local business owners and city residents who also support ordinance allowing them. So, we appreciate your consideration and your time on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation? I've got one coming up and then I will...
I'll get it tomorrow.
I gotta sit back down.
Nope, 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 you can come up, thanks. State your name and address, please.
My name's, excuse me, Bob Elzola, 455 Mill Street. I don't have anything to read. I came here for two reasons, same two reasons I was here in January. At that time, I brought up with regards to trying to see what we could do about paving Mill Street or Railroad Street, and I saw that there were some actions being taken on that, and I want to thank you guys very much for looking into that. Looks like you're moving forward with it. So, I want to thank you for that. The second reason, I was here last time, it's the same this time, I had brought up at that time, asking you to consider, you know, adopting part of the vehicle code that would allow golf carts on the streets. That was in January. I know that you can't interact with me right now, but I was wondering if at minimum, you could point me to where the right time to get an answer, or if there was any discussion about that.
So, that will be addressed later in the agenda this evening.
Where I would get an answer?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else? I know that you had your hand up in the front, go ahead, please come forward, state your name and address.
Okay, here. I'm going to pass out a copy when I want to read, because I know this is time-sensitive for five minutes, so maybe somebody will pay one of the right notes. Okay. Okay. My name is Terry Campbell. I live at 308 Fulton Street. I'm the party that apparently triggered the posting by the police department about golf carts not being allowed. And I have had a cart here and ridden it, driven it, like I have for over five years. I go down a few streets, go to a farmer's market, things in the park, concerts in the park, and basically, I take my dogs for a ride in the cart. So, I'm a resident and I wanted to reach out with a request that I think could benefit our city by passing a resolution to allow the golf carts on certain city streets. Michigan law, section 257.657A allows villages and other cities with a population under 30,000 to allow carts to operate on the streets. More and more towns across Michigan, such as Mason, Owasso, and other small villages, townships close to us and within the whole state are adopting these as an ego friendly because they need, have to be electric for the town for just getting around. And also, I might add that for older people, it's a lot easier to get in and out of the golf cart than it is your vehicle. Okay, now, just a couple of examples. Mason and Owasso have adopted golf cart ordinances, and Langsburg has. There's a whole list if you want to look online, and the statute gives what would be the criteria that the city would need to work with. They could ask that we register them, there is no fee, there is not inspection, they tell you what, you know, the safety features are that would be needed, and where and what roads, et cetera, that they're allowed on. And I would encourage everybody on council to look at this posting that the police chief told me he put out there, which was the, "They're not allowed," I think we all have seen the golf cart thing. And I also put on the, I believe it's the Williamson Community site. I note that I was coming to the meeting and that, you know, because frankly, that's, that police one is a little tricky to find sometimes, and if you're not careful, you might get ahold of the Williamson, South Carolina site instead of the Michigan one. So, I'm going to hit on just a couple of things that I know people asked about, and they have nothing to do with the golf cart, but, like I say, I think if you, the council looks at that, you can see a lot of positive responses for the city passing that. Now, one thing was, which I asked at the time, what makes my golf cart illegal, but these scooters legal? Because I don't know about where you guys are at, but these, there are kids on these things flying around like chickens with their heads cut off, and they are not very old. This has the same law as bikes, which means there really isn't, they have an age limit where they're supposed to have, you know, a helmet. But past that, like any other bike, e-bike, they can go anywhere they want.
You've got about 29 seconds left.
Okay, well, like I say, I am available for any questions afterwards that anybody had, would have. I have a lot more information, but I know tonight was not the appropriate spot to do it. So, I have a copy of the Mason map where it shows what streets is allowed, what is allowed where, and a copy of a resolution, they are not in ordinance by law, it can be passed with a resolution.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Yes, Caroline Cannorelli, 126 Block. Okay, first of all, we didn't know where to come. We'd never been to one of these meetings.
Well, glad you found us. I'm glad you found us.
Yeah, well, we tried the front door, then we tried that door, and they were both locked. We had been here since 5:30.
Oh, goodness.
So, we could get a place to park and a place to sit, you know. And you have no sign out there saying council meeting tonight, pointing what door to go in. It would be helpful. And I also am for the golf cart change. Now, oh, I have a question. Can we ride, can we take the golf carts on the sidewalk? Is there a resolution against that?
This is only public comment right now, so I'm not going to be able to address that, but we are taking notes and we will respond to that. But it's just for your public comment at this point.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation at this particular time? Please feel free to come forward. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and close our audience participation. We're going to move along our agenda. The council meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2025, I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there are changes that need to be made.
Vote to approve.
Thank you so much, do I have support?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Terry?
Yes.
Do we have a council payable, or as you like to call it, where did all the money go?
Where did all that cash go? Okay, three observations here. One, we spent a lot of money on trees, collecting downed trees and so forth, but we also spent, I think, $400 or something like that for Jack Smith's tree orchard that's out here in the water area, the pump area. And I walk out there for a kind of a weekly walk out there, and it looks glorious. It's great. I mean, there's a lot of trees. It's surprising. So, we spent a lot of money on trees. We spent a lot of money on a thermostat, but it turns out that the city, the company that billed us for the thermostat, there's two bills in here from that same company. The other bill is very reasonable. The thermostat is outrageous, but it's a thermostat specified by a former city engineer, and there's no other way to get around it. So, although it's outrageous, it's what it is. There's no ad valorem expenses here, so we didn't pass on any money to other government entities, and that's it.
Great, thank you. I'm looking for your motion.
So, is, make a motion to approve checks 78432 to 78465, ACH 1615 to 1649, and ETF 1650 for a grand total of $95,511.76.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you both. If there are no questions regarding our council payable, which Terry does a fabulous job giving us those big numbers highlights. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Benalsford?
Yes.
Rhimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Alright, action items, we have three for this evening. The first is the MML trust, or fund trustee election. We have a memo in our packet from Michigan Municipal League with who the candidates are being put forward. So, I am looking for a motion regarding those candidates and their terms.
No, other than, there's four candidates for four spots. I know two of them professionally, and one I know because he is a council member in my hometown. So, I don't know him well, but I don't have any issues with any of the candidates.
So, we do this one motion.
And I don't, I don't want to be written in, so.
Okay, alright.
This is, this is just for the MML workers' compensation fund, it's not for the MML board of trustees.
Correct. Alright, and the ballot is in here, so the action could actually read off of that ballot with that main sentence under the heading official ballot 2025.
Make a motion that we vote for four trustees, but marking the line, left of the name for your term beginning October 1st, 2025, for Brian Boggs, Maureen Donker, Craig Stolzenberg, and Deborah Stewart.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Are there any questions regarding this, in case anybody needs a bit more detailed information? From John? No? Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Rhimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Benalsford?
Yes.
Alright, our second action item of this evening is DTE street lighting agreement. We do have a memo in our packet. I'm going to turn that over to our city manager, John Hannipin, for explanation.
Thank you. I think this is a sort of a long time coming for some folks. We had discussed this some level of detail in our visiting session about the city owns and maintains a portion of the streetlights in town, and then there's also older generation LED, or older generation LEDs or mercury vapor sodium halide lights in downtown. So, we've been discussing this with DTE, and if you take action on this tonight, there's a couple of things that will happen. We'll be out of the light business, which is a good thing. Just to give you an idea of the scope, light poles cost about a thousand bucks each, and then the globes on top cost anywhere from $450 to $750, depending on. So, they're expensive. We have to carry a small amount of inventory for that. We're also responsible when a bulb burns out. We don't really have the equipment to maintain those. I mean, so we have to hire an electrician to do that. So, it's really, there's a lot of tangible benefits from this, and some of the, beyond the tangible, which although most people see this now, is getting rid of the yellow lights on Main Street. That's one of the first steps in this. Also included in this contract is a replacement of lights over at the Sled Hill. Those are all older sodium halide and mercury vapor, and we are responsible for maintaining those because we effectively own them. So, it's, it's not common for cities of our size, unless you're a public power community, to own and operate the lights. It just isn't for a lot of reasons. One, DTE has the advantage of purchasing power in the millions of light light poles, and they have a stack of insult, or subcontractors to do the work. So, I'd have you answer any questions you may have. There is a small amount of capital cost for us, about $6,700. If you, if you go down in the contract, there's sort of a running tally of things. We are, because we are doing the conversion for some of these lights, majority of them are paid for through energy efficiency dollars that DTE is required to collect and then expend from other customers they have.
Alright, well, I think it's a very good thing. It's probably been a long time coming that we get out of this business, and Scott, I'll call on you in just a minute. Question that I have for you, John, is once DTE takes over, they change all those light bulbs. Will they then ring any of those covers and make them consistent? Because I feel like we've got a couple different globe styles at the tops of these lights.
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of different styles out there. The ones that we own primarily, they're on South Putnam, they're bigger globe.
Right.
And DTZ, DTEs are a little bit smaller. So, over time, they'll all be uniform.
Okay.
It won't be immediate, but over time, they will.
Alright, and then they would also have the maintenance for any of the electrical aspect in the pool, including the outlets that we plug into when we do our Christmas wraps?
That's right.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're still required, if they're not working, to report those, but it'll be out there expecting.
And each light pole has an ID number on it. I've probably called in before with that when they're going to light up. Scott?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. There was a mayor in the past that had a strong opinion about the tone set by the light. It was very, so people have opinions, and then they bring those opinions when they get on council, and that's, you know, that's how it works. So, so we, that's how that happened, was there was an opinion about the tone set by the type of lighting and strength of it, and that's how that came about with the, with the bulb. Now, my question is, I know the LEDs come in tones that can range from blue to yellow. Are you gonna, where are you going with that?
They'll be what?
So, the red and the blue?
Yeah.
Alright, perfect. Excellent. Thank you, Scott. I love the fact that you run history because you've been on council before, so thank you very much for that. Anybody else? Yes.
My only question would be, if there's a, if a light bulb is blown out right now, you get ahold of DPW and say, replace the bulb, and they go replace the bulb. If a bulb is blown out, you get, DTE is doing it, you call DTE and say, please replace the bulb. Do you have any concerns about how long it's going to take them to do that?
Well, if, if there's a light that's out, we have to call an electrician if it's something more than just the bulb being out.
Well, you don't just call, okay.
Yeah, I mean, our, our staff can replace the, if a globe is broken, or if it's just a light bulb, but if it's anything beyond that, we have to call. DTEs, two-thirds of our lights in the downtown are already owned and operated by DTE, and I saw them out there last week. We had a light to call them. There was a light across the street that's one of theirs that the, the globe is off-hilter, and they, they're pretty quick about that.
Okay, one more question.
Steve?
Looking at the purchase agreement, help me understand how we get down to the $6,800, looks like, immediate cost, and how going forward, what that cost might be? Because I'm seeing a $35,000 lamp charge, annual lamp charge. So, can you?
Sure.
Sit through that and help me understand what our costs are going to be going forward?
Sure, and you're not going to like the answer, because we already pay a lamp charge for the lights that we own. So, we've been paying a lamp charge, and that caused, it's not a new cost. We're already paying for a portion of that.
And is this something that has been budgeted and factored in as we've gone through our budget cycles?
Correct, yep. So, it's not, it's, it's a small net increase because we have this upfront capital cost of just, I think it's $6,800 bucks and change.
Okay.
Because mainly, it's, it's to pay for some of the controllers, like it's a part, and all that's listed in, that, let's see, it would be on 8B, page 8, it does a listing of what we are replacing. But we do, we already have ongoing costs for all of our lights that we currently pay for.
So, I want to, I want to make sure that this is clear. Whether it's a DT-owned light or a Williamson light right now, we're making payments to DTE on all the lights?
Correct.
Okay, does that answer your question?
And for, for the ones that we have controllers on, which would be the Sled Hill, South Putnam, some on North Putnam, and the park, we pay, we pay $2,500 for a, it's basically a meter charge, to have like a separate meter control box charge. That's before we use any power.
Okay.
So, we're already, we're doing that already.
So, your assessment is going forward, the $6,800, and then what I'm hearing is that for the most part, it'll be a wash?
Correct.
Okay, but we'll save some money as far as staff time and?
Oh, yeah.
Having to maintain?
Having the inventory, yes, absolutely.
Excellent, very good points. Thank you. Dan?
I was just going to point out that we currently, we currently have a hodgepodge of city-owned and DTE-owned, and this is basically putting the whole burden on DTE instead of us. And like, it's not, oh, hey, that light's out, is that one of the ones the city owns? Who do we call? Or do we call DTE? And the clarification on the lamp cost, the lamp charge is very good.
So, John, my last question before I call for the motion is, we have inventory. What happens to that inventory once DTE takes over? Do they take that inventory? Do we hold onto it? Do we get to sell it for surplus? What do we do?
Yeah, we'll, we'll sell that for surplus because again, their light poles are different than ours.
Yep.
And then the globes are different.
Excellent.
And then we wouldn't have any need for those anymore.
Alright, so we're going to make a little one. Alright, I'm looking for this motion to move forward.
I'd move that we approve the street lighting contract as then as provided in detail in the materials sent to staff, sent to the council.
Thank you so much, your support. Alright, if there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Benalsford?
Yes.
Rhimes?
Yes.
Alright, our last action item this evening is the High Street Improvements Contract. We do have a memo in our packet from our city manager, John Hannipin. I'm going to turn that over to him at this time.
Thank you. Spicer is also here if you have any technical questions. We did advertise for the High Street Improvement Project, and just to recap for folks, that's from North Putnam to Cedar. The reason it's, that's the project limit is that's a portion of the major street, and as we talked about during budget time, there's significantly more funding available from the state for major streets. We'd like to be able to do the whole street, all the way to the Eagles. But to give you an idea of the scope, that would be an additional about $600,000. This High Street is almost half a mile long, and the portion that we're doing is about $700,000. So, we did receive two bids from Reef Riley and from Michigan Paving. Both are reputable companies. I think that the bid documents were pretty good because both were pretty close in the bid tag duration. The bids were slightly under the engineer's estimate of $200,000, so that's a good thing. So, the bid tabs are in your packet, as well as the memo from Mr. Westmoreland, who I said is in the audience. So, what we're asking for tonight is a motion to approve Reef Riley as the High Street Improvements Project for the contract award of $181,233.33 with a 10% contingency of $18,000. And I rounded down a little bit. I mean, I got tired of going down some point.
Okay.
$18,000.
That's fine. John or Phil, can you just quickly recap what is the work that's going to be done in that span of space between Putnam and Cedar? Infrastructure?
Yeah.
And paving?
Yeah, generally, the, it's, it's a paving, there's only four inches of asphalt there, and I don't know what the vintage of that road is, probably circa 1970, something, probably. The base is in pretty good shape. We've done some corrings for that. So, it's really the, the paving. If there's any curb repairs or anything like that, we would, we would do that. And then there is that storm, there's a storm drain that's just west of the second access drive of that parking lot, and that's starting to sink. So, really, that would be it as far as the project. There's not any, there's no sewer or water infrastructure. There is quite a bit of work at the intersection of Cedar and High, but it's mainly just, there's a lot of utility conflicts there, and so we just have to be mindful of those.
Okay, alright, great, yes.
Yeah, I did have a question about the bidding process. So, if, if someone's bid in the past, had done work in the past, and it's so debatable what they do. There may be a reputable company, but we didn't have the best experience, and they bid again, and they're the low bidder, and we really don't want them back again. Can we protect ourselves in that, or do we have to?
Yeah, and typically, is, in these funds, it's not a run-through the MDOT process. They, they have very specific rules if you're going to reject a little bidder.
But you can do it.
But you can do that.
Alright, thank you.
Based on past performance, I think that would weigh heavily if that were the situation. Yes, Terry?
If this gets approved, when might this happen?
Our pre-construction meeting is scheduled for tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, so we'll have the, we would have a, we'd come out of that meeting with a schedule. Optimistically, I mean, though you're smiling, I know you're as optimistic as.
I'm going to speed that up, I mean, tomorrow.
We can start today after we vote?
At this point, I'm guessing some point in August. We want to get it done before school starts.
Sure.
So, it's not, it's not a long duration worth of work.
Right.
You know, some, some of the phases are just a day or two long. It's just scheduling, and then probably the longest time is waiting for concrete to cure that we'll have out there. So, my guess is sometime first part of August in there, take them a couple weeks, all said and done.
Okay, yep, and, and yes.
And just if I can anticipate the, the questions that would come, we, I did reach out to the Sowing Growth in the, the Farmer's Market and let them know that this project is coming. There's, right in the pre-bid instructions for tomorrow, there's no work on Saturday or Sunday. So, and also, the street has to be open for local traffic.
Yep.
As much as reasonably possible. Obviously, when you're right smack in the middle of doing your removal for a couple hours, or fixing the storm drain, there may be some restricted access. But as far as market and Farmer's Market vendors, the concert of the park, folks will be able to get to the parking lots, the primary parking lot at McFarlane.
Right, and we've got our crosswalks where people can go down the street from the parking lot behind the pub and, and the Sun Theater and crossover Putnam. So, best Worst-case scenario, inclement, inclement weather, we could go a little bit longer than that.
It's, it's only a mill, and Phil, so I mean, it's, it's fully drivable every day.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before I ask for the motion?
Just quickly, the four inches of asphalt, that was, that was, did you think that was like inferior or not sufficient?
I'm amazed it's held up, because I think that road's older than me, and that's, that's pretty old, so with that, and, and it's a moonscape now, but it's...
So now we're going to have five inches or six inches?
Well, we'll still have four inches of asphalt, but the base is very welcome back, and that will be you.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. I'm looking for that motion to move this forward, please.
We make a motion to approve the bid by Reef Riley Construction Company for the High Street Improvements Project for the contract amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-five dollars and thirty-three cents, with a ten percent construction contingency of eighteen thousand dollars.
Thank you so much. John has support.
Sure.
Thank you all. There's no other comments or questions. Holly, we call the roll, please. Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. We're moving down the agenda to discussion items. The one thing that I do want to state, because I did speak with our city manager prior to the start of this meeting, we are going to put golf carts on our next agenda, which will be July twenty-eighth as a discussion item. This is going to give us the opportunity to look at the information that's been provided by you, our audience. Thank you very much for doing that, because I know that takes time and effort out of your daily lives. And I appreciate the fact that you're willing to go those extra steps to bring information to us. But what we're going to do is, we're going to task the city manager with looking at other municipalities that are in similar size and demographics as ours. I'm going to ask our chief of police to look at safety data. Golf cart versus pedestrian, golf cart versus personal vehicle. I need to know that to make sure that if we move this down a path, that our community is safe. I'm also going to look at rules and regulations, so that our council can be best informed as to what would fit best for us. And that means type of golf cart, what's allowed, what's not allowed, how we register it here in our city to make sure we know who has golf carts, what that driver aspect looks like. And so we're going to start at that discussion point. And we're not going to rush through this, because number one, I want our community to be safe. I want to be able to give an opportunity to our residents if we feel that it's a good fit for Williamson. But at the end of that process, if we feel that it's not a good fit, then we're all going to get to that together. We're not going to do something that our community doesn't know about, because I believe in one-hundred percent transparency. So I just wanted to make sure that I started that off with, as we move into discussion items. So come back in two weeks, we'll start that discussion, and we'll see where this takes us. On our discussion items for this evening, we have our three that have been our usual suspects for the past couple months. Construction project update, master plan update, main four safety improvements. We did just get a construction project update, but I'm going to turn all three of these over to our city manager, John Hannafin.
Yeah, thank you. So for construction-wise, at our next council meeting, we'll have an action item for the parking lots at the depot, and also the parking lot out here for the police station, and then a number of different patches throughout town, similar to what we did towards the end of the last fiscal year in budget areas, like over here on Cedar, for example. There's a patch necessary. But we'll have that for you for an action item next time. We did turn the line striker loose today, so you're starting to see progress on that. So they're coming in, tomorrow's brush day, so they're not, probably won't get to the striking tomorrow, although there's not a lot of brush out there, they may get to it in the afternoon. But by the end of the week, we should have the majority, if not all, of our parking lots done. We're not striking this one, because we tend to build on that. So, so that's good. As far as the master plan, any questions on those items?
The strip strippings, that include the parking spaces on Grand River and...
Yep. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they did, they did, they got most of this block, and they were doing it in and around the cars that were parked there. You know, they wisely chose not to strike while people were in place, so if they need any more calls on that, so. The master plan, we're, we're full-speed headed at the planning commission meeting in August. We did, we didn't meet in, in July because of schedule conflicts. And then with main four safety improvements, I'll be sending you the concept for those this Friday, and then we'll have, again, we have it as a discussion item, but we may make a separate discussion item on the agenda, just so it's called out a little bit more for folks.
All right. Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for John regarding those updates? All right. Moving along on our agenda course, finance received information only. We did receive a letter from Comcast. This is really exciting information for Williamson, so I'm just going to pull this right up, because I think everybody in our viewing audience, and everyone sitting in this room should know that... Where'd it go? Do you have it right now? Hold on. Yeah.
I've got it.
Yeah, all right. Well, this is very exciting, Williamson, because I want to let you know that we are repackaging the Cartoon Network. Comcast, as a part of our ongoing commitment to keep you and our customers informed of changes to Xfinity TV services, we wanted to update you, that Comcast will repackage the Cartoon Network to the more sports and entertainment tier on August twelfth, 2025. The channel number will not change, and we have informed our customers of this adjustment. If you're a Comcast, Xfinity customer, and you don't understand that, give them a call. All right. Moving down, we've got our department head reports, and I'm going to go back over to our city manager, John Hannafin.
I don't have a lot to add, other than hopefully everybody's enjoying the summer. Try and make it out to one of the concerts that's coming up. Ran into a couple of local celebrities today, Byron Aldrich and Jim Carr. Mr. Carr's going to be singing two weeks for the Community All-Stars, so make sure, it's a campus, so make sure you hear him.
Excellent.
But other than that, I don't have anything to add.
All right. Thank you. Moving down the row, we've got our chief of police, Chief Weiss, you've got a report in here.
I do. I'm doing well. The stats are included in the report I gave you. I include in the monthly, monthly use of force report as always. We continue planning for National Night Out. It's looking to be a little bit bigger than it was last year. The state police was, was looking for a partner to partner with, and they are partnering with us this year, so. Red Cedar Jubilee went well from a law enforcement standpoint. I appreciate the Department of Public Works, Ray Schmidt and his crew. They did a lot of the stuff that you didn't see, necessarily see, for security measures, and I appreciate him and his staff for everything that they did. And staff did get out and get a chance to attend some baseball games at elementary school fields for the stings and stuff, so.
Excellent. I don't want to say that we're wishing away summer, but we are mid-July, and I know that talk of return to school is going to happen. And so just wondering if you guys are ready for the challenges of drop-off and pickup, anything you think you might be doing differently this year?
Same, same as last year, we're looking forward to it.
All right. Well, last year was great, because I didn't know one word about it. So you guys did an awesome job.
And I'm thinking that's how it's going to continue.
All right. Excellent. Thanks, Chief. I appreciate you being here this evening. In our packet, we do have our treasurer's report. If you have any questions regarding anything you see on this very detailed report, please reach out to Tom Need, our city treasurer, or go through our city manager, John Hannafin, he will get those answers for you. We also have in here our report from Livingston, I'm sorry, Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering. They are the ones that do all of the permit issuance for residential and commercial new construction renovations. So if you have any questions regarding what's happening, it looks like, you know, things are plugging along right through the middle of summer, please reach out to our city manager, John Hannafin. He will reach out to Livingston County and get those questions answered for you. Committee, subcommittee reports. Any of my council members are on a report on meetings. Go ahead, Terry.
NISA. Three things from NISA. One is, and John answered a question on this in an email, but apparently there was a, there was a ballot issue saying, shall we increase the millage that's going to be sent to NISA? So everybody's, everybody's millage went up. And, but NISA's pointed out that the tax, the TIPA groups and the DDAs, they claim the tax increases before NISA does. So it seems like the voters said, let's give more money to NISA, so, but then the DDA and the, and the TIPA thing stepped in and said, thank you for the tax increase, we'll take the money, and NISA doesn't get the money. So apparently this is legal, that's, that was your point in the email. This is, this is just the way it works.
Okay.
It seems a little bit of a one-two switcheroo thing to me, but...
It works, it works with all these different millages. Not, this, this is not a NISA-specific thing. This is how the TIPA districts and the DDA operate. If they weren't capturing dollars, they wouldn't receive dollars from those districts.
But it seems like you're saying to the voters, increase this for the NISA stuff, and then it doesn't go to the NISA stuff. So the reason we brought this up is because Weberville, at the conclusion of a four-year project, they're finally going to take some of their money from the tax increase, they're going to give it to NISA, twenty thousand dollars. And it was, it just took forever to get this whole thing, but they're very happy about getting some, and they'd like to get some from us.
Sure. So John, can you give that a little bit better explanation? Because if I'm understanding it, us as general residents, our NISA millage is going to NISA.
Correct.
But anybody that is in the TIPA district or the DDA district, we get that money first.
That's correct.
And then if there's anything left, then it goes to NISA.
Well, the TIPA and the DDA exist to, it's true, they capture that portion of the taxes, but by having those, and the evaluations are significantly more than they would if they wouldn't have been. So what was the fractional increase of the millage, you know, or percent increase?
I don't know the number of those.
Because I think, I think that's, I mean, it's, it's a fair question to ask if you're, if you're from NISA, but it's no different if the library had an increase, or, or CADA, or any of the other, other community college, any of the other entities, it's the mayor from town pointed out.
Yeah. And I think it's also, we want to be very clear to our audience, our viewing audience, TIPA district is our industrial park location, so that is what NISA isn't getting. DDA district is this, but all regular residential, anybody that's paying property taxes, NISA's getting that money.
Yeah. I, I told the NISA board that I would ask about that, because it would have been... Dan, did you have?
I, this has been a discussion topic in NISA for quite some time. You, you mentioned that they've been dealing with Weberville for this for a long time. So in, in my times on the NISA board, we've had this conversation. It's always, we all want to see NISA have all the money that they need to protect us and to do their jobs. But sometimes, like, I know when the parking lot behind the sun, that DDA parking lot was redone, one thing that was done over there was, and that was done with DDA money, that part of that money that would normally go to NISA, that if it was not being captured by the DDA, was spent replacing water mains, which then feed the fire hydrants that are over there that were ancient. But if DDA's not capturing that money, then maybe the DDA doesn't have the money to do that project, which then replace the fire hydrants and the water mains that then NISA uses on several fires that we've had in that quarter. Just pointing this...
So it does benefit NISA?
It does.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right.
Okay. Two more things on the NISA thing. One, the chief, and I'm, I'm hesitating to be too thorough on this, but the chief was offended by this comments that were made on Facebook. And my...
Regarding their vote? Or, I'm sorry, their side-by-side?
And ATV and other expensive things that they, that they purchased. And my response to him was that if you take Facebook seriously and you're offended by that, then you deserve that. So, but, but I was, I was surprised, and the more I think about it, the more I'm shocked, that a man who leads a four-million-dollar budget organization would be concerned to publicly discuss a Facebook flame-out. I, I don't understand how that came about. I'm not sure why he did that. But it was a significant part of our discussion.
Sure.
Okay? The other significant part of our discussion was the Jubilee. And there's a lot of bad blood between the Jubilee and NISA. I'm, I'm not sure how much to discuss it again in public, but the, what it came down to is that the fireworks people were concerned, because the wind had shifted, and so they found the chief. The chief wasn't there, because he knows there's this, this petty buddy thing with, with, with the Jubilee, so he didn't want to show up. But the assistant chief was there. So the fireworks people, the report is, the fireworks people went to the assistant chief and said, we wonder if maybe we should modify the fireworks stuff. And then they went and talked to the Jubilee people, and the Jubilee people said, nah, nah, don't worry about it. And again, NISA was, was offended by that. For me, this strikes very close to home. This is exactly the sort of pattern of bureaucratic tyranny that I lived with in Uzbekistan for three years. So I, I, I absolutely cannot abide by that. So for what it's worth, I, again, I don't know why the leadership of NISA would do that sort of thing, because it seems to besmirch their reputation. But they did it. They did it in public, too. Yeah. So for what it's worth.
Thank you for bringing back that information to us. I appreciate it. Anybody else have their committee meetings that they want to share or report out on? No? All right. We have another opportunity for audience participation. Same rules are going to apply. It's a maximum five minutes per presentation. If anybody wants to come forward at this time, it's another opportunity. Yes, feel free. And I know I'm going to ask you to state your name and, and address again, just because we do take minutes and...
Caroline Panerelli, one-two-six Block Street.
Thank you.
Now, again, we were supposed to have a lot more people here tonight, but they probably went to the main door, and it was locked.
We'll make sure that we have something on the outside of that door, or next time we have a meeting.
Every time you have a meeting, we have, or put on this door council meeting, you know. Okay.
Thank you.
Can we write our golf carts on the sidewalk?
No, you cannot. Not right now. Not until we have something put in place. I'm going to ask, just for safety issues, we don't, we don't let people bicycle on the sidewalks. There are signs actually posted. So I'm just going to let you know right now that until we can actually walk this path, there is no ordinance that allows you to operate your golf carts in town right now.
There isn't?
No, there's not.
But there is, it's state law not to drive on the street, ride them on the street, but there's a sidewalk law too, state?
I'm going to state it again, that until we get to the end of this path, golf carts are not allowed in the city of Williamson.
Okay.
Thank you. Come forward.
Hi there.
Hi, Council.
I'm Jane Reagan. I live at eight-oh-three High Street. I was so excited to see the subject line, "High Street is Getting Repaved, But It's Only Two Blacks." So all the rest of us neighbors, from the three-hundred block to the Eagles, can hardly wait to hear the schedule for the rest of the street to be repaved. So if there, if it's on a current schedule, maybe I'll send a letter to you, Mr. Manager, and share that with my, with my neighbors.
Sure.
A moonscape is an excellent description of that street. It's excellent. And so, I mean, we're wearing two hats. One is a, somebody who lives on High Street, and I'm a member of the Board of Sowing Growth that runs the Farmer's Market. So thank you for giving us a heads-up that this is going to happen. Just a quick little update on the market. Last Sunday, eight days ago, was a holiday weekend. Usually, everybody's gone, nobody's in town, and we expected a really, really low attendance. The usual attendance, we get five, six-hundred people at every, every market. We're open twenty-three Sundays during the summer, during the season. We shattered an attendance record with over a thousand people attending the Farmer's Market last Sunday, July sixth. We had some new vendors, including a fabulous ice cream. We had a lobster food truck that we learned has people, people drove from Lansing, from Haslett. One guy was telling us that he follows this lobster food truck all over the Midwest. So those combined with people that were in town looking for something to do helped us shatter that attendance record. And then the board has agreed to have three holiday markets. One on the Sunday before Thanksgiving, that's November twenty-three, and then two in December. Sunday, December seventh, Sunday, December fourteenth. And because it will be cold weather, we'll, we have found an indoor... And because it'll be cold weather, we'll, we have found an indoor venue, we won't be in the parking lot, but we'll be at the Senior Center, the beautiful new Senior Center. And again, we'll get all that to you in writing, but as long as I was here, I thought I'd add that. And then I will sign a petition to, to allow golf carts to be driven in the city. I, I would love to know what suddenly changed that, and I bet all the owners of golf carts would like to know, too. What has changed that now they're not legal? So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else like to come up this time? Go ahead, Terry. You, yep?
Oh, it looks like you're sending her.
Nope.
I noticed it was the.
Pointing towards my bench podium.
Okay. I don't believe I just mentioned this, and I didn't bring enough for all the audience, but like the Farmer's Market and that type of thing goes in, this is probably one of the most important things I should have put, that the golf cart will give more accessibility to the parks, all the parks and other events such as the Farmer's Market. I could not get parked anywhere. Concerts, meaning in the park, sporting events such as the baseball games and the other stuff that hangs out down by, I think, the elementary school, there's quite a few. And imagine this, National Night Out, how are we supposed to go? How can you expect a big crowd where they're gonna park? Especially if you are handicapped. I can walk a certain amount of distance and then I have to stop. And it's always, through all of this, you know, I think these changes in the golf cart enhance the community spirit that Williamson is trying to convey. And I think I might have two extra copies, if somebody in the audience of what I wrote would like a copy, I'll give it to you. Oh, and as far as on the agenda for next month, I believe it could be put as an action item. If you don't have the information, you can always table it. So I would like it as an action item. And then, you know, when you look at the statute, it will, it's pretty clear on what you can and can't do. So there's no, you know, unless we intend to break the statute, there isn't that much extra information that can be provided. So, and I'll be outside for a little bit. If anybody wants to speak with me, that'd be fine.
All right, thank you, Terry.
Thanks.
Anyone else at this time? All right, moving down our agenda, we are to our council member comments. I'm gonna start with John.
On Sunday, we had a water, water sewer issue at East Church in Veneta. And Lickety Split, DFW was there. That was impressive. We left our church, we came back from church and they're packing their bags up, and that was, that was, that was really impressive, especially since my, my immediate two neighbors were freaking out. I have no idea what it is, but DFW was there, I was impressed.
Terry?
I spoke with some people in the Hillsdale City Council this last week, and they were, they were lamenting the fact, one of them actually said that they think they're gonna have gravel roads by the year 2030, because they just cannot get their roads paved. We have 14 miles of road, they have 41 miles of road. So I think that's the number one reason why little towns get, go broke. So we're doing a great job. The same people who went up here, driven around town, and they go, wow, how come your roads is in such good shape? So it's, it's not an easy thing, but we're doing a good job.
Thank you, Terry. Steve? Dan?
I am very interested in the discussion of the golf carts for the next meeting, and I'm looking forward to that, hearing some more from the seeing man during the police chief on their perspective. We've heard a lot from the residents, obviously, the people that are here tonight are very much in favor of it with their petitions and whatnot. But I'd like to hear from Chief Weiss and seeing what their thoughts are, and look more into what, what the state statute is.
Great, thank you. Scott?
Totally agree with what you were commenting about. Also, shout out to the theater, amazing play right now, dealing with family history, family structure, family memories. John Lopper, amazing, plays two characters in it, and somehow they manage to talk to each other. Worth that one, though. Yeah, two plays at the same time. That's a great play, so.
All right, thanks.
I'm just kidding.
Maybe. So in my short conversation before we kicked off council this evening, I was in speaking with city manager Hannafin, and back when Mr. Palazzolo came in and, and brought forward the idea of the golf carts, I wasn't really completely on, on board with it, because I immediately, my mind went to retirement community, and this isn't a 100% retirement community. But I have to share that I was just down in Key West for a week and a half. And if a city like Key West can manage golf carts and six-person electric vehicles, and we were down there for a week and a half, and everybody coexisted very well, I think there is potential here, but like I wanted to reiterate again, we need to do it the right way. We need to make sure that it is a good mix for our community. And we have to take our time to look at other communities, ordinance language, safety concerns, and, and be very aware of what the potential impact could have for us. And we have to look at, is it a good impact or is it a bad impact? So I appreciate everybody that came and spoke, because I, I do think there could be a, a place for it. I, I know that we have a very generational community, but I also wanna make sure that we do it properly. That's our job up here, and it's, number one is safety for our community, but also to make sure that we're a thriving community. And we definitely are, because of the events that we host, the people that come to our city, because they wanna be here in Williamson or visit. So I appreciate everybody. And so I appreciate all these guys up here that sit and, and bring their wisdom to this table, too. We're, like I said, we're halfway through summer. I'm looking forward to National Night Out, which is gonna be that first Tuesday of August. I know that there are big plans in store, and it is always such a great opportunity to bring community together with our first responders in our wonderful McCormick Park. So I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed for really good weather, and hopefully maybe there'll be some ice cream there. All right, excellent, you guys get together. But I just hope everybody is enjoying summer. I hope everybody had a great time in Jubilee. I hope we're looking forward to the remainder of the concert series, and we got Dog Days of Summer coming up in August. I know we're gonna have a couple more events throughout the fall, you know, and gosh, we're halfway through the year, and that just blows my mind. So savor it, everybody. Savor what you have out of the remainder of summer. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn at 6:50.